All right, good evening. I'd like to call the board this regular monthly meeting for the Cape Toronto Board of Education. It's Monday, May 23rd, 6:09. Please let the record show that all board members are present. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, word before you, you have an agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. The agenda's approved. First thing we have up are recognitions, Dr. Glass. There's a bunch of them tonight.
And boy, do we have recognitions tonight. We are recognizing students for their great achievements on the state level and the national level. So that's fantastic. I love talking about these things as superintendent. First up, Samuel Wong. We heard him speak at graduation. Samuel finished his career at Cape Central High as the valedictorian. He scored a perfect thirty-six on his ACT and is leaving CHS with published math research. Tonight, we would like to recognize two new accomplishments for Samuel. The Missouri Top 100 Scholar Program recognizes the state's list of top academic seniors. Meanwhile, the National Merit Scholarship Program is arguably the most prestigious scholarship program in the country. Each year, a select group of National Merit Scholars are identified based on their excellent academic records, performance on standardized tests, and their leadership skills. I'm happy to announce that Samuel is both a Missouri Top 100 Scholar and a National Merit Scholar. Samuel, congratulations. You represent the state. This is for my records, when you're on Forbes Top 100. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Next up, National Beta, headquartered in South Carolina, recognizes outstanding young people in thirty-nine states, the District of Columbia, China, Hungary, Puerto Rico, and Russia. National Beta encourages members to continue education beyond high school. They do this through their national scholarship program. Today, we are honored to have two students who are among this year's two-hundred-and-fifty-two National Beta Scholarship recipients. Two of the two-hundred-and-fifty-two. That's amazing. Beta members are not only high academic achievers, they are also leaders and service-minded individuals. While grades help determine Beta Scholars, it's the leadership and service activities as Betas that draw winners to the top. With over five-hundred thousand members, two of our own were selected as two of the top twenty-five Betas in the country. They exemplify the Beta ideals of academic achievement, leadership, character, and service. These two students are clearly outstanding members of the class of 2022. I'm proud to announce Olivia Garagani and Sophia Sapp are winners of the National Beta Club Scholarship Award.
Sophia could join us this evening. Olivia, congratulations.
How about we recognize our band and choir to start making their way up here up front, please. These incredibly talented individuals represented us at the end of April in the Misha State Music Festival, receiving exemplary ratings in the below categories. Vocal solo, soprano clarinet, soprano alto tenor bass double quartet; vocal solo, SSA sextet; trumpet solo, alto saxophone solo, and the keyboard mallet solo. Ms. Davis couldn't be with us tonight, but Mr. Lamar is. Hey, Mr. Keys.
(laughing).
Mr. Keys, not Mr. Lamar.
I'm standing in for Mr. Lamar.
Got you. And I'd like to invite you to say a few things about this tremendous group if you would like, Mr. Keys.
Oh, I'd love to. These guys, they work hours and hours to work up solos and/or ensembles to perform, first of all, in Jackson at the district contest, so that's the district level. And they received gold rating, which is the highest rating you can receive. Back in my day, it was a one rating, so if that helps you relate to that. But now it's gold rating. And then they were eligible to perform again in Columbia, Mizzou, for a state rating. And all of these guys received gold ratings. Did you go, you went through and read their event?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we had some that couldn't be with seniors, a lot of seniors, but I think they're in the Bahamas or wherever. Anyway, let's keep going.
Year in and year out, we always have a great band and choir program. We have one final group to recognize tonight before we recognize our terrific Tigers, our esports team that I got to see in action as they won the state title. They recently captured the state title on the heels of a second and a third-place finish at Nationals. I'd like to invite Coach Matt Miller up to the stage to introduce our outstanding players as we hand out some trophies for these young men.
I want to get my other two coaches up here. Mr. Limer, Coach Limer, Coach McKittrick. Coach Sire could not make it to this, so he was not available for handing this out. So we're going to start with our national competition in Knockout City and our second-place team. Some of our people are here today. Kelly Mattis, Cameron Patterson, and Zeke Rainier. So, Mr. Miller, are those like your handles on the back, like the name thing? Yeah. It's traditional in gaming, you use gamertags, so. The cool part about these guys is they won second in the fall and in the spring, so.
Congratulations.
Then our third-placed Knockout City team, Caleb Williams, Jayden Close, and Etta Harper, from Mississauga. And then our state championship team in Super Smash Brothers is Wyatt Means, Caleb Ramdial, who was sick tonight, so couldn't make it. Kelly Mattis over there also was on this team. Cameron Patterson was also on this team. Dylan Boyer, and I don't believe Caleb Wilson is.
Let me go get a picture.
Kelly, you're tall, but you're holding the trophy in your big middle. Wherever you need to go.
Awesome, congratulations. Mr. Miller is extremely passionate about gaming. It is awesome to watch. I mean, I don't know how many kids they have at one time, but I think it's sixty to eighty in the classroom. And middle school has picked it up, the junior high, of course, and the high school and Central Academy, so it'll be one to watch in the future, for sure. All right, all to our terrific Tigers. We are pleased to recognize our main terrific Tigers. These are students from each of our buildings that have been selected to receive this award based on their service to others, their leadership, and their scholarship. As we recognize the students, we also want to recognize the parents for all they do. So as we call each student forward, we would like to ask them to stand and be recognized as well, and you're more than welcome to take pictures.
Alma Schrader Elementary, Bennett Grable, first grade son of Emily and Eric Grable. Bennett is an outstanding student. He's always encouraging to his peers. He tries his best with his classwork. He'll be the first to seek out students who need help. Way to go, Bennett.
Congratulations.
And he's beating with stuff, brother. That was good.
Blanchard Elementary, Talia Frye, first grade daughter of Robin and William Frye. Talia is an exceptional student. She's well-rounded with her ability to soar way above grade level in all her academics, and she also oozes kindness like nobody's business. She challenges herself to do better and works extremely hard. Talia is the epitome of a terrific Tiger.
Awesome. Thank you.
Clifford Elementary, Owen Johnson, fourth grade, son of Jessica Thrower. Owen is a wonderful student, friend, and classmate. He's quick to make sure all classmates have a friend during partner work and at recess. He's a role model for the younger students at Clifford. Owen's can-do attitude is an amazing quality to have at school. Franklin Elementary, Cullen Sparks, kindergarten son of Ashley and Daniel Sparks. Cullen is a great role model to his peers. He's respectful and kind to all. Cullen is always willing to help a friend or a teacher. He's always following instructions. Cullen's been a joy to have in kindergarten and at Franklin Elementary. Jefferson Elementary, Luis Johanna Salinas Garcia, fourth grade daughter of Irma Garcia Guzman and Alejandro Salinas. Central Middle School, Lex Peterman, sixth grade son of Lisa and Neil Peterman. Lex has been delightful since day one. He works quietly on his own, is very responsible, and always receives compliments from his teachers. He's always working hard each day to do his best possible. Lex brings a smile and positive attitude to class each day. Continue roaring as you enter TWKCGA's Lex. Terry W. Kitchen, Junior High, Charles Ethan Adams, seventh grade son of Bethany and Charles Central High School, Ethan Groves, twelfth grade son of Kaylin Ryan Groves.
Bahamas.
Central Academy, Marquavia Corbett, twelfth grade daughter of Alicia Thomas.
Bahamas.
Bahamas, awesome, yeah. Going back to April, Franklin Elementary, Samantha Alwright, fourth grade daughter of Danielle Tharp and Tyler Dodd. Terry W. Kitchen, Junior High, Marcus Hinson-Moore, eighth grade son of Amanda Hinson. Okay, and we know Ms. Augers is not here. And Central Academy, Blake Burgess, sixth grade nephew of Samantha Florrie and Cody Johnson. That's all.
While we're getting on deaf, we're paying volunteers for chaperones. That shit's Bahamas. Mr. Keys knows better.
Let everybody sneak away real quick, if that wants to. I believe we had one request. Is Ms. Terry Brown available?
Hello? My oldest, she's twenty-seven. She went through Central for a while. Now, my son is going to be a junior man. And I just want to...
Can you speak to the mic in the mic's line, please? Thank you.
Is it on? Okay. I just wanted to, last month, you were commending teachers, and my son has all of those teachers. And I can say that I just wanted to give a hats off, basically, to the high school at how well my son has been able to transition coming from Trinity Lutheran. And I also want to commend you on the partnership with Trinity Lutheran. I've had two children, and now I'm going to have grandchildren going through. And I think that partnership is going to be really fundamental, a good thing for our school and church that I've been a part of. I've always been very involved in the school there. And I just want to thank, make sure the teachers and the school board that I see that you're trying to do the best for our children. And I just really wanted to give a big shout-out to everything that we've been through the past couple of years and let you all know that as a parent, I appreciate you going to bat for my child. And the teachers that I've came to and the counselors have all been willing to listen to me and talk to me and help my son make the transition in his struggles. And the only other thing I want to bring up is I'm really, really trying to get the archery program, the Missouri NASAP archery program, in the school. Is that you back there? Okay. I'm going to answer.
I've got some ideas.
Right. You've got some ideas. So, you know, I just want you all to really think about it. My son is not a running child. If he has to run, there's a bear, okay? I mean, and so he is involved in the electronics. He's moving into the digital media program at CTC next year. I'm really excited about that. But I'm a strong advocate for this archery program, and I know it's going to take some heads together, but I'm also coming in with a lot of grants that I learned to write. And then when COVID happened, it got shut down, and it didn't happen at Trinity. So I've just been, the grants are sitting there with the money to fund it. And I think it's a big opportunity for a lot of these kids that are like my son, that don't fit in in this or that. And I think if it's something else we can put out there for the kids with minimal cost for the school, I think it would be a great thing. My son will go out to Boy Scout camp, and he learns archery, and he loves it. But you throw a basketball at him, and he'll just look at it. And I think there's a, I think there's a lot of kids like that. That's what I've learned. I met a very, I'm a volunteer for Missouri Conservation Heritage Foundation, and I did that so they taught me how to write these grants and try to promote it in this area. There's a lot of schools that this is a really big deal for. And we do have a lot of considerations to take in with it, and I do understand that. But the money is there to fund the program if we can get the volunteers and the PE coaches involved and some parents like me that are willing to give up some volunteer time to better our kids. A friend of mine I met, she's a six-time World 3D Champion, and she has coached these kids for years. And one of the kids that she coached from beginning down, they start the program between third and fourth grade, depending on the maturity of the kids. And this, this young man, between that and his academics, just got five-hundred thousand dollars in scholarships for college. The money's there, just like bowling. I don't know if you know my cousin, Lauren Sides. She went through Central, and she went through college on a bowling scholarship. But the bigger thing for me is to give more opportunities to these kids that don't fit in somewhere. And it is a physical sport, they're just not running.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate y'all.
Isn't it an after-school program?
It, it could be, but you lose a lot by doing it just after school. And, and we, in your email...
Maybe at four-thirty, aren't we? We have some ideas.
Right, exactly.
Maybe not within the school day, but possibly in the school program.
Right. If we could devote two weeks out of a PE session to it, and I've got the money for the extra equipment, so.
Four-thirty, Thursday still?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. I'm glad you know.
Maybe, but, so you'll report back to them about what we figure out. And any, anybody that has any ideas to help us get these kids involved and get this program going, please let him know, because I'm really passionate about this. And it's not just about my child, it's about the other kids out there that are flailing around on Xbox at home when there's something else they could be doing a day or two after school.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that was all the requests.
Thank you, guys, for taking my kid.
Next up, we have a presentation on the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan process. I want to turn it over to Dr. Glass for introduction.
Absolutely. Well, we have Dr. Hinson here with us. I think he just got done over at Jackson presenting a few things. We've not formally met, but he comes highly recommended from several superintendents that I've met with and the RPDC about his work, his company's work with CSIPS, MSIPS. And of course, you know that's a big item right now as we get ready to go into MSIP-6, is revamping our CSIP plan, which is our Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, make sure we capture all stakeholders' input in the next direction for the next five years. So that is our compass in guiding the district. We're going to be tapping on a lot of people to be involved in this process. I'm very, very excited, and I invited Dr. Hinson in here tonight so you guys can start hearing a little bit, and we can start having more conversations around this process.
Thank you, Dr. Glass. Good to be with you this evening. Now, since I spent the day in Jackson, is that good or bad for me?
Well...
Okay, that's what I thought, so. Let me give you a brief background in relation to, we call it EGL, so I'm a part of a group called the Education Governance and Leadership Association. We're an education service agency, ESA, only provide services to public school districts in the state. So we have two really demanding initiatives right now. One is in relation to the CSIP or MSIP-6. I'll talk a little bit about that tonight. So the Missouri School Improvement Plan, or program, if you will, we're starting the sixth version. Each version lasts about five years, so it's been around for a long time. So, Dr. Glass, we might have been superintendents when it even started back in those days. And so the sixth version is different than the previous five in relation to the additional requirements of MSIP-6. So MSIP-6 contains a portion now called the Continuous School Improvement Plan, so they've changed the terminology. One of the big differences, the Annual Performance Report, or the APR of the district, a portion of those points, approximately twenty percent of the points, are contained from your CSIP. So these should be easy points for most school districts if you follow the process correctly, if you implement your CSIP and you correctly monitor your CSIP. So the CSIP process contains really two different components. One is the qualitative and one is the quantitative. The quantitative is really the data that you have or should have in the school district based on the standards and indicators. So in the MSIP process, as required by statute, the State Board of Education approves the standards and indicators two years in advance of implementation. So technically, the standards and indicators go into effect July 1, so right around the corner. They were approved two years ago. So a part of the evaluation of the district is in relation to how well you're doing on the standards and the indicators. So that's the quantitative portion. So a part of the service we provide is really what we call a data dive. So we take all the standards and indicators, all the best practices in the data dive, and go through with the district, do you have all of these items in place? And then are all of these items board-approved? And so that's a component of the data dive. So we're going to do most of that, we're going to ask a few questions of the district, but that's an exhaustive process in relation to, are you aligning with the standards and the indicators? For example, one of the standards and then the indicators requires that each Board of Education approve a long-range facilities plan. So we're going to ask you, has the Board of Education approved a long-range facilities plan? If the answer is no, then you're going to see a SMART goal, which is contained in MSIP-6, for the district in relation to the board eventually adopting a long-range facilities plan. What is in the long-range facilities plan is your business. The goal of the standards and indicator is, do you have this in place and is it board-adopted? So one of the changes that we see is in relation to the number of documents and plans that are required to be approved by each local Board of Education. So quantitative, data dive, good there. The qualitative is really in relation to the stakeholder input. So the stakeholder input is how do you, as a Board of Education, gather information from all of your stakeholders? So the process that we go through is in relation to, number one, conversations with all employees of the school district. Those conversations are going to occur generally small groups, sometimes individually. It'll be common plan times, whatever works out for your schedule, but we're going to mark off X number of days in your district that you need and simply have a conversation with your employees in relation to, what are the strengths of the school district? What are the opportunities for growth, improvement, change? All of these questions are vetted in advance through the superintendent's office so you know exactly what we're going to ask. These questions go to all employees of the school district, not just your teaching staff. In addition, we're going to ask to sit down with each of the board members individually, ask you the same questions. Your administrative team, decision of Doc and Glass, meet with him as a team or individually as well. And then in relation to the community, so we ask that each of you, on the leadership team and the board, select at least six people that represent your community well, very diverse representation of your district. They're going to be invited to a series of small group meetings where we're going to ask them these same questions and engage them in the process. If you so desire, we will have general community meetings as well. Our announcement will go out, if you want to discuss the direction of the district, this is when these meetings will occur. In addition, if you so desire, a survey, collaborate in advance on the questions, goes out to your entire community as well. So that survey would go out to your current email database and also be placed on your website and if you have any other method of communication. So potentially, obviously, you will have significant number of responses in that regard. Student side, a minimum surveying... website and if you have any other method of communication. So potentially, obviously, you will have significant number of responses in that regard. Student side, a minimum, surveying your juniors and your seniors in relation to things they want to see addressed or changed. For example, a common question would look like, what would you like for the students that follow you to experience that you didn't experience? So it's just a series of questions trying to gather information. So the stakeholder input, pretty exhaustive, all employees, multiple days in the district. Community, minimum, asking each of you to select at least six people, be invited to a group of, a series of small group meetings. If you so desire, also the general meetings, just inviting people if you want to attend, we facilitate the meetings and have the conversations with anyone that wants to attend from the community. And then in addition to surveying the community, we want to survey at large, surveying a minimum of the juniors and seniors. Some districts want their student councils at all levels to be interviewed in small groups, that's entirely your choice. The real key and the real nexus in relation to what's required from CSIP is extensive stakeholder input. So a very deliberate process of gathering information from a lot of different individuals. So once we see all of those survey results, have all of those conversations, then we go through a process in relation to synthesizing everything that we've heard. We're really looking for themes or priorities. We consistently heard this message, hate to give you any examples because I don't want to get that cart before the horse, but we consistently heard X. Then we take the information from the data dive. This is what is indicated in relation to the standards and indicators and what you may or may not have in place. Put all that information together and then come back and have the conversation with you. This is what we found, this is what we've heard. Are we on track? Anything we've missed? And it's just an open conversation dialogue. Next step is we start developing really your plan. So we write your plan for you. That plan is written in a series of SMART goals, so they're very specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. This becomes your document that turns into your, again, now it's called the Continuous School Improvement Process. So on multiple occasions, this document is, as, this document as it is being refined is going to come before you as a Board of Education. Once the document is finished and you approve, then there becomes a continuum or a timeline, if you will, of all the SMART goals. This continuum is very important because this is really how you're evaluated from the state. So when you are reviewed as a school district, they're going to look at the time of this certain SMART goal. Did it come before the board, which is the key? What was your evaluation of the plan? Goal was met, was not met, where do you go from there? So really different than how we've operated under CSIP previously, but those are really the requirements. So process is in relation to extensive stakeholder input, data dive, combining it, eventually we go through a series of meetings with you and your leadership team in relation to developing the SMART goals and eventually the plan. So I know you have a document in front of you, I'm here to answer any questions, anything you might want to know.
Timeline for, for this process, what do you typically see?
It varies greatly dependent on the district. Don't do what a district did to me recently, and so they called in late April and they, they said, can you meet this timeline? I said, what's your timeline? Well, we want the board to approve it in June. That's not really a doable timeline. So generally, what we see, Dr. Glass, is, for example, in your regard, the data dive can really occur at any point in time. Stakeholder input would have to occur in the fall.
Right.
So we have everybody back. So you tell us when you want it finished, November, December. Other districts want to stretch it out over a year. Ideally, from our perspective, once you have the stakeholder input, then you really need to move forward with your plan so that people know their input was really considered and they can see their input really in action.
Sure.
So ideally, probably sometime in the fall, completion of everything.
I know that you've listed some, some of your team on here. Looking at three, four of you down here at a time, just yourself?
It will not be just me, at a minimum, it will be Dr. Zalis and myself, Dr. Hatfield. You probably know, Dr. Hatfield as well, will probably join me, depending on really when you want to do the stakeholder input with your employees. So ideally, we're probably talking three individuals in that process. Because we're going to be in all your buildings, for example, at one elementary school, and we're going to be there for an entire day of stakeholder input. So you can see we're going to be in the district for a while.
So for districts that already have a CSIP plan in place that's pretty comprehensive, what do you do with it in regards to looking where we've been versus where we're going? Do you incorporate both of them together in the process?
So, great question. So what we do is sit down with your leadership team with the existing CSIP, what has been accomplished, what are you still working on, what needs to continue into the next plan as well? So it has to be included in the process in moving forward. But the current requirements, you have to go through the entire process again, but certainly include, if you want to, what has been used previously.
So under the new APR, is it an all-or-nothing thing as far as points?
No, there are different levels in relation to points. And the real monitoring guidelines, there was a meeting today, a little smirk on the face, there was a meeting today between the RPDCs and DESI and the area supervisors on those final monitoring guidelines on how you really classify the differences in relation to points. So a little bit of that plane is being invented as we fly, if you will.
So there's a rubric that everyone follows?
There is a rubric. What DESI's trying to do is making sure that the rubric is consistent regardless of the region that you're in at the state.
So that's what my next question is, are we graded the same as St. Louis and Kansas City and Springfield and Chaffey?
Yes. Yes, sir. Other questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
All right, moving along, we have informational reports, Board President's Report. Just a couple of things, I'd like to thank everybody that took a part in making the graduation on Friday such a success and give the Booster Club a shout-out for providing all the ice-cold water. The other thing I had was, I know my household's excited about summer vacation, so I want to wish everybody a safe and fun summer vacation. So that's all I have for that. Next up, we have the superintendent's report.
First off, since Ms. Scheller's in the back of the room, I want to congratulate her on an outstanding graduation ceremony. It was beautiful. Everything went out off like clockwork. Very, very proud of you, your team, your teachers, all the students, they did tremendous. You know, in Central Academy, it was just a beautiful thing to witness, really was. Obviously, as Matt said, our last day is, is this Thursday, it's hard to believe, we've already completed a year. Congratulations to all the faculty and staff. You know, it's always bittersweet, you know? We need the break, we need the rest, but it's, it's, it's also bitter that you, you see your, your students that you built such a relationship with move on to the next level. They're growing up on us. But, so thanks to each and every one of them for all their hard work, dedication, classified staff, for all their hard work in, in what they do for our kids and support. I'm hoping that you all saw some of the great media coverage of this news, but I want to make sure I shared that. Jefferson Elementary, Central Middle School received a $5,000 grant to purchase new library books. Awesome. Laura Bush Foundation extended that, that grant opportunity. We're very excited that we were awarded two of those. So that's it.
Cool. Thank you. All right, next we have Program Evaluations. First up, we have Career and Technical Education with Dr. Gilliams.
Now, I promise I won't get emotional, it being my last board meeting. Although, it's always pleasant, so. Thanks for having us, or having me tonight. Just to give you a few, you all have the report that I filed, or the evaluation, so just a few things to highlight there. First of all, in case you are not aware, the Career and Technology Center doesn't serve just secondary students, sometimes that's what is thought, but we have secondary programs that, obviously, we have students from not only Central High School, but from 11 other schools who send students to us. We have post-secondary programs that are just for post-secondary students. We have community education programs that are kind of the fun stuff. You can come take ballroom dancing or, or, you know, any number of things. We have decided that, we also have a bakery class, and this year at our ballroom dancing class, we had two singles who signed up, and now we've decided that our culinary baking class is going to make the wedding cake. So we've been successful matching folks up. That isn't on the list, but it did happen, actually. And then we also do a lot of customized training for businesses, so. And that is one thing that we pride ourselves in, if you look under the strengths of our programming, one of the things that we do pride ourselves on is we have a lot of business and industry involvement, and we have, every one of our programs has an advisory committee that they're required to meet with twice a year. A few of you are, are on some of those committees and, and we invite anyone who would like to participate to do so. But it is, it's an opportunity that we get to find out what we need to be teaching. So we're not just going by a textbook or what somebody in Ohio says that needs to be taught in HVAC. We're doing what businesses and industry in our community say need to be taught in HVAC, or whatever the program is. So that's a big part of what we do and it's, we, we think that's what makes a difference in, in our programming. Another thing that we've been really focusing on, and that was part of our, our CSIP, so we're a part of the district CSIP every year, or every five years, whenever it's done, but we also have one individualized for the, the Cape CTC. And one of the goals that was actually a part of both was soft skills curriculum and teaching soft skills to students. And so that is something that we have actually developed a, a soft skills curriculum. We use that with all of our classes, it's very intermingled in what we do, and we feel like that's been very successful. We have a big mock interview time at the begin, at the end of the year where all of our students participate in mock interviews. A lot of those students end up, you know, they find out that they're not really mock after all because they end up getting jobs, especially our seniors and adult students. So we feel like a lot of that stuff has, has worked out very, very well for us. We also, just to give you a little bit of an update on attendance, well, first of all, on the, on the cost of our programming. Dr. Glass, you need to pay attention to this number and start using it.
I'm paying attention.
Okay, thank you. Frequently, he, he tells people what the CTC costs and that number has changed, so we need to make sure we change our number. Thank you. But then also, on our enrollment, we do have a, you know, obviously COVID hit us pretty significantly, but at the start of the, the 1920 school year, we had a little over 600 students enrolled, and that dropped down to about 450, 460, which is normal in our nine-month technical programs, so our high school programming. About 450 had been normal for us, but we were, we had done a lot of recruiting and making sure that people, that students knew, parents, students, they knew what we did and they knew what programs were available to their students. And of course, COVID, you know, took a lot of students out because they weren't able to do it virtually if they wanted to. It also has hurt our enrollment for the last couple of years because we haven't had, been able to have those open houses and those tours and those visits and things that, that we normally would have. But our enrollment is, is going to be close to that come fall, so it has crept back up. And, and all of our programs, with the exception of our nursing program, which has always been a steadfast, full, full, full program, and I guess people are scared of being nurses right now. So it has, it is not our fullest program and that is a very unusual for us. So other than that, I don't know if you have any questions specifically? We did catch the governor's attention a few months ago. Actually, I think we've caught his attention a few times, but he made comments specifically about the Cape CTC and that we were kind of an, an example or a standard in which other career centers across the state should strive to be like. So I felt like that was a, you know, a good thing. Hopefully, when we, when we ask for money, which we have recently, he signs right off on that and doesn't ask a lot of questions. But we do have a, a good reputation. We are starting a fire science program next year, which is new for us, at the request of Cape Pub, or Cape Fire Department, Jackson Fire Department. And I think because of a reputation that we have across the state already, normally you have to be 18, 17, almost 18 years old to take the fire science exam. And the way we were going to design this program, we were going to have juniors taking that exam, juniors, you know, so 16, almost 17-year-olds. And the, the state fire department agreed to give us a, a pass on that and allow us to, to do because of our reputation with EMS and, and paramedic program, that we have a good rate of percentage of passage for those students, so they agreed to let us kind of be a trial in the state to, to allow younger students to take that class and to take that exam. So I feel like we have a good, a good reputation and, and I am retiring this year, but I have no doubt that all of that, as I told my, the, all the staff, it seems like an odd time to retire. I mean, everything's going great, I feel like we have an absolutely amazing staff and, but you know, that's when you leave, is when the, the ship is in calm waters and sailing in the right direction. So it's a good time to turn it over to, to the next round of leadership that will do awesome as well. So, oh, oops, I silenced my phone but not my watch, sorry. Sirius XM wants me to re-up my subscription. So are there any questions? Anything I can answer?
What could we do to help you get more kids funneled into CTC? Like, everybody's hiring, there's tons of great training that happens there, I think there's a lot of kids who maybe don't totally know it exist, I mean, they know it exists, but they don't know that there's things there that would be good for them, that would be a great step for the Monday after graduation from high school, they already prepared themselves for that. What can we do as a board, as a district, to kind of help make that even better?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, I feel like we are doing some things, we're, we're doing summer school with eighth graders this year, so Cape Central eighth graders are getting the, the chance to come over and take some of our classes and hopefully, you know, spark an interest. Even particularly, I think it's great for those at-risk kiddos who, who may be ones who are being required to take summer school. It's, anybody can come, but if they're being required to take summer school, all of a sudden, it is a, it's a motivation that I want to stay on track so that by the time I'm a junior, I can go to the CTC full-time and take classes. So that's a step that we're taking, but mostly just tooting our horn for us and, and, you know, we do have, we have, I do feel like opening back up the, the tours has been a big deal. And this year, we didn't just do our normal tours, we, we took ninth graders, 10th, you know, kids that, that didn't get to come last year, we tried to get them in. We have opened up some more spots for our adults who come into our secondary programs because we heard over and over again from kids that said, I didn't know this was an option, you know, and they're graduating from high school right now and they should have come when they were in high school. But those were the kiddos that, that missed coming for tours as 10th graders because of, of COVID. So, but I, so I can't really just toot our horn for us, I mean, any, anytime you get an opportunity, when we ask for money, say yes, I mean, you know, things like that, you know? Anybody else? Nope, all right, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
And Libby's, Libby's been a great leader, I'm proud of where the CTC is. It's, it's a tremendous place, the faculty and staff are second to none, and I'm proud of her leadership and worked with her for the last 14 years, and she's, she's done an outstanding job. Really appreciate what you've done, you're going to be missed, Libby.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have homeless students. Ms. Keys?
Any questions for me? You guys have time to reveal it? Our number of homeless students has been dropped the past two years, has it been higher than the years prior? We get about $400 from federal money, title money to support those students?
But we also have, okay, but we also have funds that the community puts in. I mean, pretty much if we have a student that has a need, our social workers get that need met. So we are very blessed in that world.
Is there a reason why there's a decrease in the number of homeless students?
I, yeah, it is a great thing. I think there's two reasons. One is that there was quite a bit of money that came in during COVID to families, especially the more children they had, the more funding they were getting, so I think that allowed some people to get into housing. The difficulty, well, in, in addition to that, I think people under-report because I think they're afraid that if they admit to being homeless, that their children are going to be removed, which is not the case. So you'll see on there that one of my program goals is to make sure that we educate our families, that that is not what happens if you self-report, that actually you will have access to more resources and funds where we can better support you and your student. So that's one of the program goals that I have set as well. And then the other issue, and this is a bigger community issue, is that many renters will not rent to individuals who have been evicted, especially not if they've been evicted twice. So that leaves our families that have had significant financial issues in the past with no ability to get housing, so they're living in hotels. And so even if they're living in a hotel, they're still considered homeless because it's it's not a regular, there's like four standards under it that would be considered regular house living.
Is that four hundred dollars per student or that's total?
That's total what we get, but like I said, we we spend much more than that, but it's funded by community organizations. And again, we do not have a problem with that. We could request more, but that funding really is given based on your numbers. So if families are not self-reporting, we're not going to get more federal money, but we help whoever asks for help, so they don't really have to even self-report that they're homeless. If they have a need, we work to try to help them. Any other questions?
Stick with you with the special services?
Sure.
Our budget has pretty much stayed the same. You can see that our numbers decreased a little bit from last year, which is always a good thing. We are seeing, however, that we are getting students in that are very significant, have very significant needs. So that means that we are needing to hire more one-on-one teacher assistants to support our students with significant needs. So you'll see the spending going up unfortunately for next year due to that as we start to hire those new positions. But our students, as far as MAP testing goes, they were under the state average in some areas, but above the state average in our high school EOCs this year, which was great to see because typically the split gets higher or gets further apart as the students get older and we see less of our students scoring proficient or advanced on the EOCs when they get to the high school level. But this year, or from last year's scores, they did much better. Any other specific questions for me?
All right, thank you. Next, nutrition services, Mr. Crowell.
Thank you. All right, once we're zoomed in, you'll see that this report is based on, excuse me, last year's numbers. We're still currently in this academic year, so we can't have those numbers for you until about August, September is when DESI finally reconciles that. So this is based upon last year. You'll see that we really strive to work with community organizations to address the nutritional needs of students. We work with organizations such as Tiger Bites through St. Francis Medical Center. We work with Care to Learn for our backpack program to also reach out to the community outside of our regular school hours. Reminder that we are a CEP district. We are in our last year of our initial cycle event that goes on a four-year cycle. So there's two options that we are looking at currently right now with DESI, either filing an extension to continue on our first cycle or re-up in an entirely new cycle. So we're kind of running the numbers on that right now and you'll hear a little bit later at a June or July board meeting on on where we're at with that. Providing additional opportunities to distribute food to students, again, that just kind of goes back to our backpack program and also our grab-and-go programs. Several of our schools, we're looking at implementing second second-tier breakfasts where kids may come in late to school, may not have an opportunity to get into the cafeteria before it started, but in between first and second hour, we're looking at how those programs can lay out. But there's very stringent guidelines on what DESI allows for reimbursables, so it's it's not just simply opening that up. We have to look at how we implement that correctly. We feel we have a lot of strengths to our program with our certifications of our staff members, with their safe food handler cars cards, training that goes in from the county health department, so on and so forth. Currently, right now, there are so many waivers that are out there through the USDA, through the federal government and through state. We are going to be losing those waivers for next year. Those are waivers that were implemented during COVID. So there are going to be a lot of menuing items that change next year. We will not be allowed to serve DiGiorno's Pizza anymore, so the kids are going to be upset about that, but we'll we'll still have great quality food for the kids.
Any questions?
Whether we continue on the same cycle for the CEP or we have to start a new cycle? Is there any danger of losing that program?
No.
And then as far as some of the struggles we had with supplies?
Still continue to have those struggles and and we're not singular in that. That is still nationwide. I have been in contact with our legislative body on what that may look like going into next year. My feelings are what will happen is on the federal level and speaking with Blunt and Hawley's office and what they are kind of guiding us through and what they're telling us is that the federal government through the USDA has has taken out all those waivers. They want to see how things will go. And then around September, October, they will see that, oh, maybe this wasn't a good idea, and that would spur them back into action to possibly re-implement some of those waivers. Unfortunately, what that would do is that would affect school districts across the country and basically having to trip over ourselves until we get caught back up. So we are making arrangements to try to hit that head-on so that there is not as many effects on our districts and our on our kids, but we're continually working through that.
So those waivers were nutrition guideline waivers?
Yes.
So if they don't?
And supply guideline waivers as well, too.
But if they don't, if they don't re-implement those, are we going to have suppliers that can supply the necessary safety in those guidelines?
That's the question. I cannot answer that. So for for example...
Well, everybody's in the same boat.
Everybody's in the same boat, so it's not like Cape Public Schools is an entity on itself. It's going to be every single district in the state of Missouri and every single district across the country. They don't have a named penalty per se. As of now, in the past, basically what it would be, it'd be a write-up and through an administrative review, they would say, hey, you had too much salt content in the green beans. We document that. Don't do that again. If you do that again, then it'll go to a tier-two warning per se. Eventually, way down the line, it could affect your funding, but that's not on the horizon at this point. Any other questions?
All right, thank you. Next up, academic services report. Okay, nothing to assign it. How about instructional technology update?
All right. So again, summer is 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 here pretty much, and so just closing down summer, getting ready for next school year with with Canvas, also getting ready for our new teachers and new staff who's going to be coming in this summer. And so we are preparing updated modules for them this summer so that they can get started early. This is the first year we've actually been able to get them before July one. They're already, they're able to get into their logins and be able to do that. And so we have some summer sessions scheduled already. I've got thirty-eight total throughout the summer. And so any staff who wants to come in with tech, and then we have a few other trainings here and there already scheduled using our new platform that I talked about last month. And taking the admins and our ed tech cohort finally gets to go after two years of not going to ISTI, and so we're really excited about that. Trying something new this summer, we're going to try to automate some some documents, document creation. And so for the first time, we're going to try to dive into that and see how crazy we can get with that, just something new for us. And so instead of having to create, you know, thirty documents for this thing, you know, we can hit a button, put a couple of things in, shoots it all out. So we'll we'll see how that goes. And then we're getting ready for some new tools, new-ish tools, like EdPuzzle. EdPuzzle's a great tool for use of video in the classroom and takes videos and it puts questions and other prompts along with it. And so looking forward to that. Some of our buildings are already using it and and we are expanding that a little bit. And also looking forward to piloting Galileo Assessments, which is currently being used K-4 as our benchmark test in in preparation for MAP and also doing some of the end-of-the-year data analysis on that. And one cool thing, I don't know that I've shared this with Krista yet, but with the preliminary data, year-over-year K-4 this year is already outdoing itself by thirty-three percent than last year. And so, that's that's right, that's, yeah, exactly. And so, but our year-over-year data is looking looking much better for this year. So we'll see how, like she said, how that translates to the MAP test. And so that's all I have. If you guys have any questions?
No questions? All right, well, thank you. Next up, we have the CTA report.
I didn't get a lot this month because I know everybody's super busy and counting down only two and a half days. So I just have a few. First, I wanted to recognize all of you guys, the board and central office, through, on behalf of the high school and some of the other staff, the way that you guys showed up to be there for staff emerbs to attend the teacher's funeral, dispoke volumes. And I've heard many, many remarks of just how amazing that was. So thank you to all of you and shout out to you guys. For Central Academy, they gave a shout out to the entire staff for surviving the school year. It's been rough and one for the books, but we've had many successes for both students and staff. At Clifford, Mr. Clay Collier, our PE coach, and the Play Day Committee organized an amazing field day, and we were able to actually partner with other schools in our district and the Cape Parks and Rec. And they were out there at 6:00 AM with us setting up the stations and it was awesome. We actually had room for everybody to enjoy and it was very well organized and a great day for the kids. At the CTC, one of my favorites, Ms. Renee McWilson's video for Oscar night was outstanding. He gives so much of his time to the district and is an amazing teacher. He is always giving a hundred percent to his students and the school. At the high school, Julie Stausen, I may have pronounced that wrong, worked so hard with our at-risk kids in her CWC classes. They continue to read the same books as the other classes and remember what they read thanks to her enthusiasm and passion for the kids and the content. And at Jefferson Elementary, Katie Stagner does an excellent job promoting Jefferson through Facebook, the Facebook page. She is always sharing great content from other teachers, and she also spearheaded Play Day shirts and ordered and organized them for the whole school. JE is lucky to have Ms. Stagner. And the junior high, we already kind of talked about this earlier, they say congrats to our esports coaches and team for winning the MOSF Middle School State Championship. Coach Miller, Coach McKinstry, Coach Limmer, and Coach Sire put in a lot of time and effort with those kids and it paid off. And I want to tell you guys for next year, the new position, I will be president. Mr. Tyler Loffy, who spoke for me last week or last month when I had to be mama, is our vice president. Our secretary, I succored in Ms. Robin McKinley. Our treasurer will remain Ms. Amy Mays. Shannon Ritter is joining us as membership chair, and Ms. Martian Bedlin is staying on as our salary and welfare representative. I just want to thank you guys for your support. We did it, we're almost there. And like Dr. Glass says, we're better together, so I appreciate all of you guys. Does anybody have any questions? All right, I'm almost there. Thank you, guys.
I just want to point out the new cameras we had, we had installed, I guess, a couple months ago. Randy is working those behind the scenes. He says he sits in his recliner recording these. Much better.
I think he said in his recliner, any of those work.
Oh. Two of them. All right. Next up, we have the treasurer finance report. Mr. Dade.
This report is for the month ending April thirtieth. General fund, I'll just focus on that fund for this report. Beginning fund balance, April first, a little over nineteen million. Revenues received for the month were one point one million, expenses one point six. And we transferred from the general fund to the special revenue fund, one point two million, and that is to cover our certified salaries that we pay out for the month, leaving us with the ending fund balance in the general fund of a little over eighteen million. The cash and investment detail is listed. These are the banks that hold the district's dollars. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, support services report.
Okay, good evening again. So before you, you have our federal reimbursement comparison for our food service program. You can see the history of our CEP program. You would ask questions about that. As you look at the school year, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the last two months, you were still getting numbers in from DESI, but as you can see from March and April, what our revenue coming in is. So we're still on track. We're doing well with that. And just a reminder to, you know, our revenues, we're allowed to keep up to three months in reserve and excess balances, and that's just to make sure. Mr. McDonald, your question was, you know, if something happens, that we have that money in reserve to help pay for that product at a, you know, at a higher quality if we need to. So our food service program does a really good job with that. Our bids are currently out. Those will be coming to you next month. And when I say our bids, that's our regular food products, dairy, milk, cheese, bread, all of those different types of products. We kind of waited a little bit to send those out by design because we wanted to see what other districts were doing and what they were getting back. We've kind of seen some things all over the board and it allowed us to kind of tweak what our bid language was as we sent it out because we didn't want something to come up to us where what happened to us last year, if you recall back in September, if you were with us, where we had a company that called us on a Friday night, I'm sorry, they sent us an email on a Friday night, just a little bit before six o'clock. I'm out on my lawnmower and I get a frantic call, hey, they just canceled our contract. What do we do? So we're wanting to make sure that we're only dealing with companies that hopefully won't cancel on us. And we also have clauses in these in our bids that went out, so if there is cancellation, we have a little bit to fall back on ourselves. So you'll be seeing those next month. We've signed a new MOU with Care to Learn. Dr. Glass took care of that. Again, Care to Learn is our backpack program that helps those families in needs. And then the summer, we're gearing up. We've already had our organizational meeting with St. Francis to work our Tiger Bites program for those families. Typically, it's around thirty-five families that we're able to help throughout the summer. We are extending those weeks that we're able to help those families. Last year and the years previous, it was about eight weeks. This coming summer will be ten weeks that we're able to help help those families with food concerns or shortages. Moving on to other areas with construction update to Jefferson, the college street extension has been awarded by the city of Cape. If you're familiar with the layout or unfamiliar, that will connect Missouri in Minnesota with the drive-through. If you're familiar with the layout of Jefferson, there was a gravel road that went back to an Amherst U.E. substation back there. So that project has been awarded and construction will start on that soon. We're now having to kind of work through with with the contractor on how that's going to look because it's right in the middle of our active construction site, so it's a little delicate, but we're we're confident we can work out so that road will be open as soon as possible to start the school year. It's also an exciting time because some of our staff has been involved in picking out some of the furniture for what that building's going to be come August, and that always gets everybody excited because it means it's real and it's happening. Although having the walls go up and all of that is real as well, but something about picking out desks and tables and things like that makes it even that much more so. So other than that, I have nothing further to report unless you have any questions or concerns.
Hey, Josh, I have one question. So on the on the federal reimbursement comparison, it looks like the after-school, like there's breakfast, there's lunchtime, after-school, it looks like those numbers have gone up a huge amount. Like, would it, that's just for kids to take a snack home after? Like, would it, that's just for kids to take a snack home after school, I'm assuming?
No, what that is, is that is our after-school programs at various schools, and sometimes, no, that's separate. So it may be after-school tutoring where one month it wasn't held, then the next month it was held, and so it just depends. Those programs kind of come and go. This has nothing to do with Cub Club.
Okay. Cool. That's just, do you think it serves as a part as an actual program?
Correct. Good question. No other questions? All right, thank you. Next up, board reports, MSBA delegates report.
Yes, and no major updates, other than the night conference is June tenth through twelfth. The delegates are failing hard because the primary and the secondary can't make it. So if any of you guys are willing and able, are you going to go? I hadn't heard anything, so awesome. All right, so disregard, she'll provide the update after that meeting.
All right, next legislative report.
I think the biggest thing on here is that the state appropriations kind of all passed through, and so education was very well funded in this year's budget. And so you may have read on the newspaper or in the news, some of the teachers starting salary guidelines, the state of Missouri got passed in legislature at thirty thousand dollars for starting salary. So that's partly local, partly state funding. Foundation formula is fully founded for the first time in a long time. Transportation, they, they voted now to use some of the COVID relief funding, is being used within DESI at about a billion nine. So I think things are good as far as budgetary stuff and funding education. So excited to see it because we'll continue to spend those dollars well, but that's all I've got.
Cool, thank you. Next, the Cape Public School Foundation report.
We can probably do that next time. Yeah, come back together.
Okay, so I recently wrote a grant for mental health and was awarded five thousand dollars from the Lewis and Dorothy Coover Regional Grant through Community Foundation of the Ozarks. Our grant is Cape Cares for Student Health and Education. So as you all know, as we've been talking about Care to Learn and, and our homeless students, Cape Public School Foundation also helps support all of these programs as well. We get funds donated to us for Care to Learn, and we, so we help support that program. And this student health and education, we are about our students from their, the food to their mental health, to every part of, aspect of a student, and we are a community that cares for our students. So when I wrote that grant, I talked to Mandy Keys, and we, we were awarded the five thousand, so they will be able to have some mental health, some student counseling, if we need any counseling. They'll be able to go to the dentist, and we'll also be able to provide some glasses for our, for our students. So that's exciting, and we continue to raise money for those programs as well. So not only Cape Cares, but so does the foundation, so we care about our students' health and wellness. We recently sent our tiger lilies to the National Civil Rights Museum in Memphis. We sent our Central Junior High School Girls Club to the zoo, game club. We've been supporting that program as well, and we provided the eighty family members with a very nice banquet last Tuesday night, so that was fun. On May sixth, Cape Public School Foundation presented Creed Davis, the Air Force JROTC Seth McGee Scholarship. We presented on May twelfth at the Evening of Excellence, we presented over ten thousand dollars in scholarships to several different students, including our Bill Ewing, Dick Wallington, Alex T. Powderly Scholarship, Darla Paner, and Coach Terry W. Kitchen. So we were excited to be a part of the Evening of Excellence as well. As we look forward to next year, next school year, we are already working on a spirit week. So starting Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, we are looking at trying to provide an event for our families. I'm not sure what that looks like right now. We are working with the water park, but they are not sure if they're going to be able to staff the lifeguarding. So we're going to see what we're going to do on Wednesday, but August twenty-sixth, we, is Friday, we will have our adult back-to-school scavenger hunt. August twenty-seventh, I've got the tea house, we will have a family event. It will be free to all of our families. I am looking for this to be more of a community event, support our families. I am going to be selling tea hole sponsorships, and we may have some fun games that if people want to participate in additional to raise some funds, but otherwise, this will be a free event. We're going to have food trucks, a DJ, and it'll just be a fun day out at Tea House, starting at eleven o'clock and probably ending about five or six. So then, Sunday, we were going to try to have restaurants give a ten percent back and do a brunch on Sunday, and then on Monday, August twenty-ninth, is the foundation golf tournament. And then we will end on August thirtieth with our Giving Tuesday, and so Hat Day and Jean Day, and then go out to the community and ask for our, our large asks. So anyway, that's what the foundation is doing to help the school district, and if I could, one of my grant guidelines is to get a picture, and so while we're here, can I have Missy, Dr. Fegley, since she's on the foundation board, Matt and Dr. Glass to come up and get a picture with the little check?
Certainly.
Mandy, do you want to be in the picture as well, since it's for your department?
Yes.
Please don't say no.
Thank you for trying the picture.
Five thousand?
No Bahamas, now that, I mean.
Get me here with the girls.
You're a real street, Mr. Keys.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, just for the record, Mandy pulled that grant together literally overnight and got it submitted, so thank you. You're welcome.
I'll let him use the restroom. Well, we got to vote on something real quick. We'll continue, though. All right, next up, we have approval of consent agenda items, including minutes from previous meeting of April twenty-fifth, payment of bills, the board meeting dates for twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three, and for the twenty-twenty-two summer school application, do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda items are approved. Next up, I'm not going to do this one all by myself, but we have a motion to consider to adopt the salary schedules as presented for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year, highlighted by, I'd like to get this out of my way, a four percent average increase across the board.
Second.
Discussion. Dr. Glass would probably like to comment on this, and Ms. Doudak, yes?
Yeah.
He'd like to take some credit, too, but Ms. Doudak's the one that has the most information.
I'm just going to go ahead and get started. If that's all right.
Yeah.
Kind of quickly touched on some of the schedules earlier in the work session. Just kind of go back through that and recap that. Do you want to pull the book? The first section is administrator and coordinator schedules. These, both schedules, yep, both schedules receive just the average of four percent, the individuals on the schedule. Want to highlight the teacher's salary schedule. This also received a four percent increase, giving us a, right there, sorry, right there, sorry. Step one, first-year teachers, starting salary of thirty-nine, three fifty-seven.
We were so close to forty, I was tempted, but we just couldn't quite get there this year. Next year.
Yep, next year for sure, we will. For those who have been on the board a long time, I feel like this has been a long time, this little schedule. It's like the schedule that could slowly but surely, but we're getting it there, so. Going next to the classified schedules. All classified schedules are, yep, are staff that is not certified, so that includes our administrative assistants, our admin threes, which are located in central office, and includes our custodian schedules, nutrition services schedules. Those set of schedules, those two sets, the custodians and nutrition services, those received more than the average of four percent increase, just to get the schedules where they're more competitive with the market so that we could fill the vacancies that we currently have. Adding a new schedule of the school resource officer schedule. Those are really the main changes in the classified schedules. When you go to the substitutes and part-time, let's go down to the next section. I should really tab this one. Yes, now I'm like, okay, we definitely need tabs. Yeah, okay, keep going. Right here, part-time workers, our bus monitors are on this schedule, our Cub Club kids are on this schedule, and anyone that helps with us over the summer, they go on this schedule that was increased to minimum wage substitute teachers. This schedule was changed in that we, this year, we're currently paying two different rates, depending on whether you have a degree or not. Next year, moving forward, if you're a substitute teacher, you're going to get a hundred and ten dollars a day. And then if you are in a long-term subposition, you go to step one, teach a salary schedule. That is something that we currently do right now.
In order to be competitive, we had to, we had to make that change. Of course, we always go back and forth with various school districts, you know, if one sees that one increased, then they leapfrog and here we go again, you know, and so it's never-ending, but right now, we're very competitive where we're at with the substitute, and we're always fighting for the same substitutes, it seems like, so it's just one of those, those things that we have to deal with.
Are they still doing the bonus?
We're still doing the bonus.
Yes, we still do the bonus. Substitute nutrition services was updated to match the current nutrition services schedule. Majority of the stipend schedules were not changed, they're flat amounts, flat amounts based on duties. The schedule that was changed is the stipends extra duties, that's where our coaches and our sponsors are. So they received a step and the average of four percent was added to the schedule. And there is a list of all of the stipends and what buildings they belong to behind each one of the schedules, if you're interested in that. Stipends, other salaries, those are flat amounts that people receive. There was a few that were added to that. We have a marketing and PR specialist for the CTC. That is something that we this year are outsourcing to a company, and they wanted to bring that in-house, so that is what we're doing next year. We're also offering a flat stipend for event supervision at the high school, and the head coach for boys and girls swimming is not a new stipend, it was just brought over from the stipends, the percentage schedule. It was brought over to a flat amount this year.
Reason being on the, on the swimming is that's, that's maxed out.
It is.
She can't make, our swimming coach can't make any more than, than the set amount, so we had to bring it over, not basis it off of the salary schedule anymore.
She's a retiree, and retirees have limits on how much they can earn, so that's why it was brought over to the flat. Our technology support and web stipends, the web stipends, the social media stipends were increased a little bit from five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. And the very last schedule is the stipend salary adjustments, which we talked about earlier, is the frozen salary adjustments that were needed to just get one teacher's salary schedule. Does anyone have any questions over the schedules? The cost of the increase of the schedules will be offset by our local tax revenue. Every year, we project that we will get, and historically we have, that we will get a little more tax revenue, so that will offset the cost of this. Also, we have state money. Our state revenue should increase next year, and that will help offset, too.
That's what Paul alluded to earlier, a lot of the funding that was increased at the state level, we anticipate will help offset some of the increased costs here.
Any other questions?
I have, yes. So administrator salaries are about two to three percent higher than the state average, and our teacher salaries are about fifteen percent below the state average. What are we doing to close that gap?
Well, obviously, we, we put five percent last year, we put four percent this year. We continually start to, to move that needle, it just takes a lot of time to move that needle. You know, it, it doesn't just get out of whack overnight.
Right.
You know, it, it, it's over a period of time, so, you know, when we notice those things start to trend one way or another, we make adjustments, but you can't make an overall adjustment and correct that a hundred percent overnight. So if you look at our salary schedule, if you look at Bluff, if you look at Sykeson, you look at Jackson, we, we are highly competitive, if not number one, in all those four big schools with our teachers' salary schedule. So I'm very, very proud of where we, where we've been and where we're at now. We're going to continue with our, our financial shape, continue to put more money towards that, but I don't want to get our budget so far unbalanced that we deficit spend year after year after year, because when you have to start going through corrections and start to have to risk staff, it's not a fun experience, which we've been in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, I still remember those times, where we are at below twelve percent, ten percent fund balance, and those times were very, very lean. So I do recognize that, that teachers need to be paid more, I want to pay them more, but we got to do it very incrementally, and that's why we've done some of the adjustments that we've done.
Okay.
Three question. Any other questions? See, none, okay, so.
I just want to come in then on all the efforts year after year to make sure that our teachers are compensated where they need to be relative to those schools within the region, because those are the schools that we compete with on a day-to-day basis or a year-to-year basis, trying to get the best teachers to come here and stay here.
Same, same people.
And as you see every, every month, you know, we get lists of positions that need to be filled, and we want to make sure that those positions are filled with the best possible teachers.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Good point.
And our, I mean, our administrators are important, too. That's, that's something you have to definitely look at, because you're looking at principals, you're looking at the CTC, I mean, you're looking at all these different programs that typical schools don't have, and so when you start.
And there's a lot of factors that go into that, and I'm not discounting your question, but, you know, our longevity of our principals, that, that factors into it. So our, our teachers' staff may be younger than our principal staff or administrator staff that have been here a long time, so they're on the upper tier of our administrative salary schedule, you know, those types of things factor into it. So you really got to dive deep to figure out, you know, where, where that tipping point is.
I think when I looked a couple of months ago, we were actually paying our teachers less than Jackson, Sykeson, or Perryville, and our teachers had, we had a higher percentage of teachers with master's degree, which is wonderful, and we're attracting really good candidates, and, and I don't at all mean that we want to lower administrative salaries. I'm not, when I say close the gap, I'm talking about raising one and not lowering the other.
Yes, no, absolutely, I agree with you.
Sure.
It depends on where you're at in the salary schedule. Our beginning teacher salaries, I think, I think we're number one. I think we're number one.
Yeah, I was looking at the average, not the beginning, so.
Okay, and we will surpass them, if not, if not this year, next year.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm confident. I'm really worried about, you talked about the minimum teacher salary, that it's 38,000 is what they want to roll it up to. Well, if you're a small school and your beginning teacher salary is 30,000, they're going to pay 70% of the 100% that it takes to get to 38,000, but what, they're not going to pay anything above the 38,000. So all these small schools are going to roll up to 38,000 and they're going to compress your schedule and you're not going to get your years of experience recognition year after year after year. So I'm, you know, I'm very, very thankful that we're not in that position, that we're over that 38,000 mark, so that we don't have to compete with, with what's to come. Because if they don't fund this thing, I don't know how you're going to decompress the schedule and get out of that mess. It's going to be something to watch.
Yeah, I've seen concerns about that too. If the funding is this year, but not next year.
Or two, three years from now.
What are they supposed to do?
You know, how do you roll that back? It's going to be, it'll be challenging.
It's going to be next to impossible for some smaller schools. I mean, if, say their average salary is 33, 34 for a starting teacher and you have to jump that to 38.
Yeah. And that's where some schools are at.
They're, I mean.
Some are choosing not to take the grant, apply for the grant. I know that was the setting of the texture.
Because of the chaos that it's going to create.
Because it's going to create an issue down the road.
Yeah.
But the good thing is, because of our compression ratio, we should be able to attract higher quality teachers down the line, because as you go from, you know, in a smaller school, as you go through years of experience, they'll be making less money than they did at other districts that are in the same position as them. So we're definitely in a more competitive position.
We're, we're in very good shape.
And we appreciate it.
Good work, Lindsay.
Thanks, Lindsay. All right. No further questions, then the motion is to adopt the salary schedule as presented for the 2022-23 school year. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? That motion has passed.
Thank you, board.
Lastly, we have information and proposals from the board members. Anything, anyone have anything better for the board?
I don't have a proposal, I just have a, a note. Michelle, thank you very much for the great graduation that you hosted out of the high school. I really enjoy having out there at the stadium as opposed to the Shoney Center. I just think it, it really brings out what we're about. Parents can get on campus and walk around and see the facility and I think it really adds to the whole graduation process. I was really impressed with the comments that I heard of parents and the graduates, even though it was a little windy.
It was very, very windy.
But it wasn't 100 degrees.
Our flowers didn't make it out, lights didn't make it out, the chairs were upside down, but it was a success, but it was a win. Definitely, it's teamwork. Paul was out there helping us clean up afterwards, so we appreciate it. It does take a whole lot of people to put it on, but our students are definitely working.
It was very nice having you out there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll make a 30-second chainless plug. All School Booster Club Golf Tournament July 8th, it's Friday, Cape Public School. If there's any people interested, we'd love to help support all kinds of things from the arts to athletics to academics to clubs to the band. We fund stuff and match funds across the school district and so it's exciting. And this will be our biggest fundraiser of the year. And so you can get warmed up before you go play in the foundation center at the end of August, so you get your bat strings out of the way with us and then look really good with Amy, so, thank you.
You guys don't have any fun at all.
There's no fun, no, there's nothing fun, so. We'll talk about that offline. Thanks.
All right, if that's it, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed?